Good evening, we will call our meeting to order. First, we have, we'll call Pam.
Yes, Madam President, all board members are here.
Thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Before we get started with the rest of our agenda, I did want to just bring up, many of you may have noticed the last 10 days that each of our schools have been celebrating School Counseling Week and hosting different activities for the students as well as the faculty. And Dr. Beresford shared a great quote in his thank you to our school counselors and social workers this past week, and I really wanted to repeat one of them here because it was, I thought it was very meaningful. It was, "Too often we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around." And this is from Dr. Leo Biscaglio. And he's an American author, motivational speaker, and a professor, professor, well, he was at least, at the Department of Special Education at the University of Southern California. And I really wanted to repeat this because although we were highlighting our social workers and counselors, I think this particular quote really encompasses all that we do in our Carmel Clay Schools. Each of our professional educators, all of the support staff, our administrators, in every aspect, each of you, and including our cybersecurity team, are really working towards the big picture and really supporting our students and staff each and every day in our school. So, in the spirit of Hawaii, mahalo. Thank you for all you do each and every day. And with that, we will go to our next item on the agenda, our presentations. And let me jump back over to presentations, and we have our Carmel Clay School 2020 High School Tennis Boys Champion, Mr. Inskeep.
Thank you, Mrs. Van den Berg, and members of the board, and members of our central office this evening. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here again before you for some truly outstanding student athletic achievement this year. And as we all know, this has been such a unique year. And from the athletic side and extracurriculars throughout our district, so much work has gone into creating a safe environment for our kids and our patrons that have come in, and this is also at our middle schools as well with our athletic administrators and administration. And just to say that I can't imagine that we would be able to have had the type of year we've had to this point without your support and the support of our district administrators as well. So hats off to all of you because it's allowed us to really focus on the big picture of keeping our kids safe and still being able to chase their passion and their things that they're so passionate and dedicated for. So, tonight, we are here to celebrate two of our state championship teams this fall. And going through some really unique circumstances this year, one of the things that we talked about with all of our athletic teams this year is that you're really not going to be measured by so many people in terms of what your season looks like from wins and losses. And so much of what we put pressure on ourselves within our athletic programs is that bottom line at the end of the year. And I think that's just that intrinsic value because the kids work so hard. But this year was a little different, and we challenged our coaches that what you see from the outside and the takeaway that fans will have and people that are at those events is really going to come down to what kind of protocols were you following at all these events? Were your parents wearing masks at events? Were the kids wearing masks? What did the coaches look like when they were at the events? And, you know, were we really following everything to keep everybody safe? And that was the most important thing to us this fall and into this winter as well, and something I think we can all be very, very proud of from all of those different factors that go into all those different groups I just mentioned. But our boys tennis team had a phenomenal year, an undefeated year, their fifth straight state championship, it's the 13th overall for the program, and these guys were awesome. And at the state championship meet with the match at North Central, being played at North Central, which is where the state finals always are, it is always a little sweeter to beat them on their home court. And this year, winning at 3-2 in the championship match, and junior Eli Mercer, Eli just had a phenomenal day, and he was the last match out on the court, a lot of pressure down in the third set to come back and win and to clinch the state championship is something I know he'll never forget, and honestly, any of us that were there wearing blue and gold won't forget as well. So, we're doing things a little different without having our student athletes here tonight, and Emily's been very helpful in getting us able to give you a video presentation of the kids introducing themselves and what they're up to as well. So we'll go to that. This is Coach Brian Hannan, head tennis coach over at Carmel High School. I couldn't be any prouder of the boys this year with the circumstances, with the COVID going on, all the restrictions we faced. It's just been an unbelievable year with support from our parents as well, but to win five straight is just, I think we're still a little bit in, like, it's still hard to believe that we tied a state record this year, and obviously, it's been an unbelievable year. We also won a double state championship. I know next year, we're already thinking about six, which would be a state record. So, we couldn't be any happier just to finish our season this year, let alone win a fifth straight state championship. Looking forward to number six, go Ham.
Hey, my name is Brock Fletcher, I'm a junior, and I played one singles this year. I was just really excited that we were able to have a season with everything going on, and winning was pretty awesome, too, winning state for the fifth year in a row. Next year, I'm just looking forward to being back with the guys, and yeah, hopefully we can win another one.
My name is Jack Jensen, I was a sophomore this year, I played three singles. I was really excited to win the state championship, and hopefully we can do it again next year.
Hi, my name is Ethan Eckhart, and I am a senior. This year, I played two doubles for the tennis team, and what I enjoyed most about this year was the team atmosphere despite all the restrictions we had to go through along with winning state.
Hi, my name is Jason Moffett, I'm currently a junior at Carmel High School. I played one double this year with Jones McNamara, winning another, winning a fifth straight championship title this year, I thought it was a really great feeling, definitely amazing, definitely one of the best feelings of my life.
Hi, I'm Jonathan McNamara, I'm a senior. I played number one doubles, and the best part about winning state this year was being a part of Florida State Championship Team. And I'm going to college at Marion University on a tennis scholarship.
Hi, my name's Corbin King, and I'm a senior at Carmel High School, and I played two doubles for the tennis team there. Winning state was a great experience, and it's something I'll always remember. And then college-wise, I'm going to IU, and I'm majoring in business.
Hi, my name is Eli Mercer, I'm a junior, and I played two singles this year. And it was really fun and exciting, winning state for a fifth time in a row this year, and I'm just excited to try to get six for next year.
I would add as well that the boys tennis has been the highest GPA of a team across all of our athletic programs, too, the last couple of years. So they get it done in the classroom as well, and very, very incredible group of kids to come together in such an individual sport, but you can see there that they value the team part of it. And we're very excited that our friends at ISC Sports Network are doing a short documentary on the North Central Carmel rivalry in tennis that'll be out here in a couple of months that we're very interested to see, and they call it the best unknown rivalry in high school sports. So, we're excited to see that finished product. So, anyway, girls cross country was also the state champion this year, phenomenal season for these young ladies. They also get it done in the classroom as well, is one of our top scholar athlete teams in our athletic programs, and that is the 19th state championship for this group as well. And they, the 19th overall, I should say. And this is a group that really as well kind of battled that whole schedule throughout the year, trying to stay healthy, not only with their bodies, but also everything that goes into racing. And one of the great unknowns heading into this fall was what's that going to look like when you're racing against other kids during a meet? And I think we saw it really on in cross country, Coleman Thiessen, one of our top runners on the boys team, really setting the example, crossing the finish line at Terre Haute in one of the biggest regular season matches or meets, and as he crossed the finish line, put his mask right back up as he was finishing. So, that was the type of thing we saw all year from our kids, and again, couldn't be more proud of this group as well, and their head coach, Andy Dalton, as well in his fourth year. So, let's hear from the girls cross country team.
My name's Abby Parker, I'm a senior, and I thought it was so rewarding to win state after working so hard for so many years to do so. Next year, I will be attending Creighton University to run and go to school. Go Jays!
Hi, my name is Annie Christie, and I'm a senior on the cross country team. I'm super excited we won state this year because it's something we've worked really hard for the past few years, and we really came together this year and bonded to make it all possible. Next year, I'm going to be attending Miami University to continue running and my academic studies.
Hi, my name's Brooklyn Edwards, I'm a senior on the girls Carmel cross country team, and it was really special to win a state championship as a senior, and I loved seeing all of our hard work pay off. Next year, I'll be running cross country and track at the University of Akron.
Hi, my name is Karen Ass, and I'm a freshman at Carmel High School. Winning state for me was a really cool experience and something that I never thought that I would get to experience. Next year, I look forward to getting better and getting to keep hanging out with all my teammates.
Hi, my name is Brooke Waldahl, and I'm a senior on the Carmel cross country team. And winning state this year was a really exciting experience, and I'm really proud of all the hard work that our team put in. And next year, I will be running at Belmont University.
Hi, I'm Jamie Clivon, I'm a junior here at Carmel High School. I'm on our cross country team, I'm proud to be part of the 2020 state championship team this past season. We put a lot of hard work into achieving this goal, and I'm excited to do it again next year.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Cloppstad, and I'm a sophomore, and I run cross country and track at Carmel High School. And I just wanted to say that I'm delighted to be part of this past state cross country championship team, and working with my teammates has been so exciting, knowing that we all put in the hard work together. And for next year, I just hope the best of luck for us to win state again.
Hey, gang, this is Andy Dalton, head coach at Carmel Girls Cross Country. Wow, what a season we had. I couldn't be more proud of these girls. Yes, for winning the state title, but more so, so proud of every girl on this team for the hard work and the dedication they put in for six months to make sure that our season continued all the way to the state championship, especially during this crazy pandemic season that we had. Special thanks goes out to Carmel High School Athletic Department, led by Mr. Inskeep, Dr. Harmus, and our favorite tent crew member, Dr. Beresford. We're excited, June 1st, we will restart our campaign to defend our state title in 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Inskeep, for bringing that to us, and I think what I enjoy most, although we really do enjoy having the students come and join us, I love that we are creating these, these videos forever. So our students will have them to look back on, and we will keep them housed, I'm assuming, on our YouTube, our school YouTube site, which is fantastic, because then they can share all that with their family members as well. So thank you for all you do to support our athletes.
I might just add, you know, to get my two cents in here, I did not make it to the boys state championship, couldn't go to that, but I was able to watch the sectional, which was in about a 40 mile an hour winds, and those guys were incredible. I mean, when they threw the ball up, it went somewhere else, and they were just an incredible bunch of athletes, and really enjoyed watching them compete. And then, I couldn't let this go by without pointing out, with cross country being the greatest sport in the history of the planet, I was able to watch the boys and the girls teams this year, and tracked them at semi-state and then at state, and those girls dominated that state meet. They, they were, had an incredible day. And the Laverne Gibson Cross Country Course is a national cross country course where they run the NCAAs and world-class events, and it is a brutal course. And I said, those girls not only won the race, they beat Laverne, and, which is a tough thing to do, so couldn't be prouder than of these, these fall athletes. Wish we could have got them in the building and got to see them live, but this is the next best thing we could do, and it was great to hear from them, so thank you to everybody that made that happen.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Next on the agenda, we have consent. And with consent this evening, we have the personnel report, claims, and payroll. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent? Thank you, Pam, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have our workshop, our cybersecurity workshop, and we have an amazing team, led by Christy Cloud. Christy, please introduce us to your team.
Thank you, Ms. Van den Berg. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Beresford, thanks for inviting us here tonight to talk to this, talk with you about this very important topic of cybersecurity. I'll introduce you to my team in just a moment when we get to that point in the presentation, but there are a number of people here tonight to help us learn more about this topic. So I understand this may not be quite as exciting a topic as what you might have experienced last night with the Super Bowl, but we appreciate your engagement in the topic tonight because it is very important to the students and staff of Carmel Clay Schools. So let's start for a moment by talking about what is cybersecurity? What does that really mean? And cybersecurity is like, just like any other piece of security that we do in this district, we are trying to defend against something. In the case of cybersecurity, we are defending against cyber attackers and their attempt to use our data or our services in an unethical or an unallowable way. And so it's all of the majors that we take as a school district to protect against those unethical measures that are happening. So when you think about those cybersecurity incidents that are happening, who is doing that? Who is targeting school districts? And there are a number of different names that we could call these guys. We could call them bad actors, we could call them fishers, we could call them malicious players, we could call them cyber attackers. Overall, they're just bad guys, and what's their point? Their point is just really to cause havoc, to cause frustration, to cost money, to maybe target us for the joy of overcoming us, right? All of those reasons are things that cyber perpetrators are really doing when they're attacking a school district or organization. There are many ways in which cyber attackers attack an organization. We've listed for you approximately six of the most common that occur. The first one is a data breach. Sometimes it's caused by an attacker, and sometimes it's caused by a member of an organization. An attacker might be targeting the organization and attempting to get access to data, or an individual within, in the organization may inadvertently release data to the public. Either way, that could be considered a data breach. The second type of cybersecurity incident is that of a denial of service attack. This is very common in the K-12 environment. A cyber, or a denial of service attack is when an individual is flooding a network or an environment with packets. So let's think for a moment about your mailbox. If somebody kept sending you physical letters or packages, and they continue to fill up your mailbox, and then they flood over into your driveway, and then into your street, you can't handle the volume of mail. Well, that's just like what happens in a denial of service attack. Someone attacks your internet connection, they keep throwing data at you, and you can't handle the load, and therefore it shuts down your internet connection. So frequently, students find it entertaining to see if they can do this in a K-12 environment, and they try to shut down your internet connection so that maybe they don't have to come to school, maybe they think they might not have to take a quiz or a test. But don't worry, our teachers are very creative, and they had school before there was the internet, so they know what to do in the event of an outage. The next two items tend to go together, both spoofing and phishing. And you've heard us talk a lot about phishing in this district, and we've tried to engage our community in understanding how to report phishing and what to do if they receive an email that is suspicious. Spoofing is much along the same line. In either of these episodes, a cyber attacker sends a malicious email to a staff member, they attempt to get the staff member to click on a link or to provide their credentials within a website. And once that happens, then that cyber attacker uses that information to harm the individual or the organization. Sometimes they do it immediately after that entry has been made, other times, they may sit and wait a few weeks, or even a few months, until you've forgotten that you filled out that website with that information. And then by that point, much of the damage is already being done behind the scenes. So ultimately, with spoofing and phishing, our goal is to get staff to report immediately. Malware often comes in through a phishing attempt. So an individual user receives a message that might have an attachment or a link to a website that has some malicious software attached to it. The staff member clicks the button, the software infects their computer, and then begins to travel throughout the network. So malware can be very dangerous, not only to one individual's computer, but across the network. Finally, the last type of cyber incident that we're going to talk about tonight is that of ransomware. This is probably one you've heard about most often in the media, right? The cyber attacker attacks the network, they gain access to a series of files, and they encrypt those files, thus making them unusable to the organization. In that instance, that cyber attacker is trying to get you to pay a ransom to unencrypt your file. The best defense against ransomware is the capability of having good backups, which you'll hear about a little later. So tonight, as we talk to you, we're going to talk about a whole series of tools that our team uses to protect against cyber attacks. We're going to talk about network controls, and application controls, user controls, and user education, all of the things that we're doing to patch our network, to put physical controls in place, to create awareness and education for the entire community of Carmel Clay Schools. And each of the team members here tonight will talk about one of these components. So the five most efficient cyber defense mechanisms are anticipation. We have to be able to anticipate what is coming. We have to be following the news, reading the resources, referencing the articles that we receive from Homeland Defense to know what might be coming down the path. We have to educate, we have to educate ourselves, our users, all of you as the board, our community, and our students, to help defend against cybersecurity attacks. We have to be able to detect, so you're going to hear members of my team talk about ways that we detect intrusion into our network. We have to be prepared to react, and we have to be resilient. So we never want to let down our guards, just with, like with our face mask, right? We can never let down our guard, we can't let them down with cybersecurity either. But the most important thing that we want you to remember tonight is that cybersecurity is more than just IT. It's not just about the eight of us that are sitting in this room. In fact, as I look ahead to the team members who are going to present to you tonight, there's one critical member listening, pardon me, there is one critical member removed from this listing, and that's you. You as an individual member of this community, of this Carmel Clay Schools, because you are critical to the success of cybersecurity within this district. Cybersecurity threats are real, they're significant, and they're growing exponentially across K-12. So we require your partnership in order to move this initiative forward. So tonight, I have with me Terry Howe, who is our network administrator, Tracy Barney, our coordinator of technical services, Nick Shudders, our database administrator, Josh Leonard, our server and backup specialist, Barry Newman, our wireless specialist, Scott Farrell, level one technician, and Eric Cronin, level one technician. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Barney, who's going to talk to you about an overview of K-12 cybersecurity.
Oops, thank you. Better? So they think we're easy targets. And then we have various software platforms that we have to keep maintained and updated, and so that's another reason. And then we have many vendors, and then we also have the creativity aspect from our staff and students, so that's another aspect that we have to keep up on. So what are some possible interruptions that we could see? And as Ms. Cloud explained, there could be, it could be costly, it could cost money, there could be school closures, which we know students probably sometimes like a little disruption. There could be loss of data, remediation, and probably one of the most important factors in my thinking is loss of community trust. And we, we don't, I mean, we work very hard not to lose that, so that's why we need to partner with everybody to make sure that we're moving forward. So, in this slide, you'll see that this is 2019 data, 2020 data has not been released yet, so this is 2019, just to bring your attention to it. And so, these are publicly disclosed incidents. So, again, not all incidents were disclosed, these are ones that people self-reported. And you'll see that over 60% of what is reported here is underneath unauthorized disclosure breach. And what many of those actually are, start out as phishing scams, it just wasn't reported that way. Over 90% of all of the attacks begin with an email or a phishing scam. So, there's also a map that reports, we have to report the self-reporting, and you're going to ask, is Carmel Clay Schools on the map? And the answer is yes, we are. And the reason we're on the map is there was, you'll see the, we're in, well, actually, let me open this up. You'll see we're in purple right here, and this means that there was a data breach from a third-party vendor. So it wasn't actually our data that was breached, it was from a third-party vendor. And so that's where this came about. And so who's at risk? Everybody's at risk. We've kind of talked about that. All districts are at risk, large districts, urban districts are more at risk. It's not uncommon to have more than one attack. So, just to give you an idea of a few attacks that have happened in Penn Harris, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but that was a big one that was in the news. They had a ransomware attack, and the district, they had to shut down many of their servers, and it lasted a couple of days, so students couldn't access their instruction time, couldn't access like our LMS, for instance. In Kentucky, there was an attack, and it cost them $3.7 million. In Louisiana, which I'm sure everybody's heard of what happened in Louisiana, it was not just the school districts attacked, it was also the governmental agencies. And so, the governor had to issue a statewide emergency declaration just to have the response that they needed to bring everything back up. that they needed to bring everything back up. And next up, we have Mr. Nick Shudders.
So to stay informed of all this information, these breaches, bad actors and everything, Carmel Clay Schools, we monitor and are part of groups, both at the national level, at the state level. We monitor a couple of different websites, we have a lot of tools. One of the groups that we're a member of here at the national level is the Multi-State Information Caring Analysis Center, also called the MSISEC. And their mission is to help improve the overall cybersecurity posture of nations' local, tribal, territorial governments. So it's a very governmental group and they offer some like cyber threat prevention, protection, response and recovery tools. And they also, they offer like a monthly webinar that is a members-only webinar that we listen to and it shares the latest threats, viruses, malware, vulnerable sectors. They provide a list, a weekly list of like malicious domains that we can, our network administrator, Mr. Howell, can add to our firewall to help keep staff and students safe. And some like posters and newsletters and things that we can pass out to staff and hang up on the walls just to keep people informed. One of the other national groups is COSIN, which is a consortium for school networking. They offer a lot of resources, specifically some like best practices in student data privacy. They also offer some webinars on a number of different topics that include things like data privacy, system security and how to best support and staff, support staff and student technological learning. And they represent over 13 million students in school districts nationwide, so they're very large, powerful, influential voice. One of the other groups we work with is Amplified IT and they're an education-focused consultancy, specifically around Google and the G Suite for Education platform. They also have monthly webinars where they'll highlight new features of G Suite and just to help ensure that we're utilizing all the features effectively. They have a very active community of users, like a forum online that we can post to with questions we have, we can answer other districts' questions and we all can just kind of keep each other informed of what we're seeing. We actually partner with them multiple times now. They've done an audit of our Google G Suite environment where they checked out the setup and the configuration and to make sure that we don't have any missed areas of opportunity. At the state level, we work with HECC, the Hoosier Educational Computer Coordinators. This is just an Indiana-only, like just a K-12 member-driven organization and it's a resource for technology professionals. They utilize a listserv, which is like an electronic mailing list. You email the listserv and it goes out to the members or you respond to it and make sure everybody gets it. But it's a very, very active listserv, sort of like the Amplified IT. People can ask questions, answer questions, we can throw out anything that we're seeing or problems we're having. And it's actually helped us a lot, especially like around I-Step testing, where on the listserv, they would be actively talking about issues before the vendor would even acknowledge there was a problem. They also offer a yearly conference that's attended at least by one CCS tech team member every year. At these conferences, members of the different districts and third-party vendors will share like new technologies coming out or what their districts are doing with technology, make sure that we're all up to date on the latest things. We partner with the Department of Education, who in 2017 recognized the need for attention to cybersecurity in schools. They set aside some funds to help improve the cybersecurity posture of schools across the state. And at that time, we were awarded a grant that allowed us to partner with a major cybersecurity leader here in Indiana. They also have a task force that provides resources and like a checklist to make sure that we have proper protocols and procedures in place. This checklist includes not only things of like network security and data privacy, but also physical security of the buildings and training and resources for response if something were to happen. They also allowed us to implement some phishing training, which Mr. Newman is going to talk about here in a little bit. Some of the tools that we use or websites that we look at, one of them is called Shodan. And Shodan is, it's kind of like, they call it the search engine for the internet of things. And the internet of things would be any device, publicly accessible device that's connected to the internet. So not only servers, but security cameras and like home internet devices like smart TVs and smart thermostats. And Shodan crawls the internet like 24/7, just looking for all these publicly available devices. And when it finds a device, it checks it for any known vulnerabilities and like in the case of security cameras, like default usernames and passwords. So this allows us to look and monitor our publicly available devices and see if there's any misconfigurations or vulnerabilities and get them patched before like a bad actor could try to exploit them. One of the other sites, it's called Have I Been Pwned? And it's not like a typo. Pwned is a sort of internet slang for the word owned. You'd say it a lot in like online gaming. If you were beaten by your opponent, they might say they pwned you, which means they owned you and beat you in the game. This site basically is a collection of data breaches. A security researcher for Microsoft named Troy Hunt started collecting these data breaches and he started analyzing all the data that's involved, like personally identifiable information, username, passwords, email addresses. And he noticed that in a lot of these instances, if you, if a member or a user used the same username and password in one breach, he'd find it in another one. So he put this site together where you, anybody can go, you can put in your email address and it'll alert you of any data, any publicly, oops, publicly disclosed data breaches that your information might have been part of. He then added a feature where a company or a school district can sign up with your domain. And so anytime and ccs.k12.in.us email address is in a new dataset that gets added to his, a new breach that's added to his dataset, we get an email. We can then turn around and alert the staff members involved in that email and let them know that their information is in a breach and they should change their password. Any website that they were using that same username and password with, they should change the password there as well. And some of these breaches aren't just, you know, like education-specific, like where these are some personal things like Adobe, Dropbox, Experian, Yahoo, stuff you might have heard about on the news. If any of those, excuse me, if any of those sites happen to be more personal in nature, we might also remind the staff member to use a personal email address and not their work email address to help keep CCS data secure. The third thing is not exactly a website, but it's a built-in to most major browsers like Google and Firefox. And Apple has even put it in their iOS for their iPad and iPhone and that's their password manager. If you use the password manager in any one of these products, it will compare your passwords that you've saved in there with these online data breaches and alert you if any of them are in a, have been compromised before or they'll go so far as to tell you if they're weak or even been reused multiple times. And now up next, Terry Howell, to talk about our layered approach.
Good evening. I'm Terry Howell, network administrator. First thing I'm going to do is remind myself to breathe. I'm going to speak to how we look at security in a layer approach here in Carmel Clay Schools. First, to look at network and it's really kind to find what a network, when we're talking about what it means. Network are all the bits and pieces behind the scenes that you don't typically see that allow all of our devices to connect and talk to one another. So from the cell phone that you have next to you, the laptop in front of you, the teacher computer at his or her desk. So the systems that allow all the communication between that is what makes up the network. When we're building, maintaining and designing our networks, we have three major goals that we keep in mind. Integrity of the data, meaning that the data that you have in front of you is the data that was added to the system and that you have access to all of the data that was put into the system. Confidentiality, only the folks that have operational need to that data have access to that data. And then the availability, really we want our network to be like the light switch when you come in into a room, you turn it on, it's there. That's how we want our systems to be. You need to access that system, you have access to it when you need it. The DOE established a cybersecurity task force. Their first recommendation for security is physical access to those systems. So in Carmel Schools, we have a great system currently with our door lock systems that everyone that enters a building uses a card to get into the building. We have locks on our network rooms, our server rooms and the rooms that have our electronics. But we're working with Building Grounds to add additional security, so we have those card readers for those rooms. So we know who has access to that room, who has been coming and going. We're also working with Building Grounds to tighten up our environmental controls in those rooms. Network equipment can be sensitive to changes in temperature, humidity. Within Carmel Schools, we have three connections to the internet. So with that, we have three appliances. We partner with a national level solution, enterprise solution, that those appliances are called a firewall. A firewall is kind of like the bouncer at the door of a nightclub, allowing who, saying who can come in and out of the network, what you have access to once you're inside. We, with this national partner, they update their lists for cyber breaches, flaws, known new items found out in the wild, that they update automatically to our systems every hour. So it's a real-time updates. We also partner with Homeland Security and as Mr. Shudders said, MSISEC, that we get weekly updates of known bad actors that we can also apply rules to and prevent from getting into the systems. Another system that we all deal with is email. And so again, we partner with the national level solution that filters all incoming and outgoing email, looking for viruses, malicious files, new threats and phishing attempts. For every email that you receive in your inbox, I can assure you, there's at least 100 that you do not get that were being, that have been blocked, flagged as one of these, has one of these items involved. But as also stated earlier, we really need to partner with our staff to make sure that they understand what is needed from them. It's not, as it's already stated again, it's not just this department that is in charge of security, it is a community that we need to be aware of and that needs to be aware of this topic. So with that, we put in place measures for folks to notify us about phishing when they receive something that they find suspicious and also to help us identify sources of junk mail, so we can again, help eliminate that stuff that you're getting into your inboxes. With internet filtering, we have, for our systems, we have applied for funding through E-Rate program, which is a federal governmental funding. And with that, we're obligated to, or required by that, as all public schools and libraries to have filtering on our system. We use board guidelines, policy as far as what we're blocking and allowing. And that filtering extends out to our homes for students that use our Chromebooks at their home. So now we're getting quality filtering when you're inside the district. If you're using one of our Chromebooks, you're also getting that at home. We also have, for those sites that a teacher finds that is blocked, we have a team that will review those requests as they come in for unblocking. And we look at different aspects of what they're asking to unblock. First, is there a curricular need for that site? Then make sure that there is any policy concerns as far as why that site is being blocked. Network concerns, possible harm to the network or overloading the network, and then finally safety concerns. We adhere to a standard of 3-2-1 backup, which means that all of our systems have a backup onsite. So if there's files that are created here, we have a backup of it onsite. We also have on our key systems, a second copy that we back up between two buildings. So we have a second copy of that. And for our most critical systems, we have a third copy that we back up to the cloud. And this is going to go into my next subject, which is disaster recovery. So as Mr. Cloud mentioned, the best avenue for thwarting some of these ransomware or natural disasters such as tornado, flood or fire, is to have a disaster recovery plan. So we have our critical systems, again, real-time, the data sync between a site, two sites, both within the district, real-time synchronization of data. And so if for some reason one site should go down, we're able to bring those critical systems back online nearly immediately to continue the function of our schools. Vulnerability checks, the best security system that we can have is keeping up on the new systems that are coming out, the new ways that were possibly attacked or new security flaws in software. There's always something you see in the news, this security hack, this flaw, this country has been attacking us or has, Microsoft has a new flaw. And so keeping up on those new security is one, new security flaws and making sure that we're up to date. So we have a team that actually, we will scan our systems constantly to look for those out-of-date systems. We have systems in place to check for those misconfigured passwords, out-of-date software and the newly discovered security flaws. We also have, our team is set to remediate. So when we do find out of a flaw, we have a way to get those new patches and new systems put in place. We also assimilate the attacks, that someone from the outside may try to use to infiltrate us, so that we are trying to stay ahead of the game. Again, the best security posture that we have today isn't worth much if we don't keep up with it and keep moving forward. So it's an ongoing process, never finished. With that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Eric Cronin.
Thank you, Terry. When it comes to application control, it really comes down to two different segments here. How do we maintain the applications that are currently installed on our systems now? And how do we prevent the unwanted applications as well too? When it comes to prevention, it also starts with next-gen endpoint protection, or in this case antivirus. So again, recently, we began deploying a new next-gen endpoint protection solution. This replaced a, oh, sorry.
Sure, absolutely. It's a little better right here. So recently, we began deploying a next-gen endpoint protection solution, which replaced a traditional or legacy antivirus solution, which just wasn't cutting it by today's standards. As of right now, this protects all Windows devices and servers and it can quickly detect and respond to threats using artificial intelligence. It utilizes the same artificial intelligence to kind of give a roadmap or a blueprint for our technicians, which again, just makes it a little bit easier for us to go ahead and respond to these threats as well. Again, that way, we can go ahead and see when a threat was coming into our system and where it was going to. With traditional antivirus, they don't give you that option. It's basically a flood of alerts and it's up to the technician to then piece everything together and figure out where things are going. This, again, with this solution right here, we are able to go ahead and respond a little bit quicker as well too. As Terry mentioned, we do keep great backups. But again, another perk of this software right here, it allows us to go ahead and remediate any damage that's been done by malicious software. So again, it's just better for data recovery as well too, for our end-users. When it comes also to restriction as well too, we look at application whitelisting. Again, the whole point of this is again, we have a base set list of software that we have installed on our network that we know is good for our users. The goal of this is to go ahead and prevent unwanted applications or unwanted software out there, that again, we just don't know where the data's going. We want to know before we install it on our networks. Some of the tools that we use out here for this are group policy or software restriction policies. And again, we can tailor those based off the user credentials as well too. Obviously, students may get a little bit more restriction, whereas staff members, not so much. We also can utilize our next-gen endpoint protection as well too, as I previously mentioned in the last slide. It gives us a few more tools that we could use and utilize out there in the district so that we can go ahead and just maintain a better control. We also have application approval processes as well too. So say for instance, with each of our platforms, we have an application approval process for iPads, for Google Chrome or G Suite, and also for our Windows devices too. We want to know before it gets installed on our devices. And when it comes to maintaining our software as well, so we maintain our software by first with software patches. Software patches are just basically quick fixes that are designed to address software vulnerabilities that have come up, security patches as well too, and also can give us some new features. and also can give us some new features as well. So we need to listen to different organizations like as we mentioned before with like MSISAC. When they come out with a vulnerability report, we need to find those cyber advisories and then find if we have any of those vulnerable software out there in the district. We can utilize asset inventory tools to quickly find where that software is installed and then formulate a plan for response. So we tend to respond to that with, say for instance, automated solutions. We do a lot of scripting in the background, so a lot of people don't even notice that we're doing it. And we also use different security policies as well too, to patch existing applications. Or in some cases, there may not be another application or patch for it. And if that's the case, then they're obsolete and they'll be removed. When it comes to maintaining some of the heavily reused applications in the district, in this case with macros. Macros are commonly found in Windows Office products. So say for instance, your Microsoft Word, Excel. Macros are basically just a one click solution to take care of a ton of different options. Basically, it's an automated solution. Unfortunately, they're commonly used by cyber attackers to go ahead and upload malicious scripts. And with the right user privileges and the right user escalation, they can actually if a user were to go ahead and launch these macros, they would go ahead and compromise their machine and possibly the network. We generally see this through phishing attempts, as we kind of previously mentioned on. I know Barry's going to talk a little bit more on that as well too. And that would be the case where say for instance, a user receives an email from someone they think they know. There's an Excel attachment to it, but unfortunately, it's a phishing attempt. And when they launch that Excel document, they've just launched a malicious script on their machine. So with that in mind, and also with MSISAC recommendations as well too, we have went ahead and locked macros throughout the district. So we just went ahead and cut that out to make our applications a little bit more safer for our users. And with that, I'll pass it over to Scott Farrell for user controls.
It was perfect timing. My watch just told me to take a walk. So for user controls, we want to do a couple of things. We want to make sure we're making changes to increase our cybersecurity when we're affecting users, but we want to still allow teachers to be able to do their jobs efficiently and effectively. So because of this, we have to make sure we have a good balance between security and access. A big part of that balance is making sure our users have access only to what they need and not necessarily giving them the keys to the castle per se, which would allow someone to access everything should an account become compromised. A user's account is now managed automatically the entire time the user is at Carmel Clay Schools. So rather than having accounts made manually when a new user comes in, it's automatically done. For students, the accounts are created and managed based on their enrollment in Power School. For students or for staff members, the accounts are managed based on the HR system that we use. This includes the creation of the account and which groups the account is a member of. This controls what emails the, this user is on and what shared drives the folders they have access to. By eliminating this manual creation of accounts, we save employees' time and eliminate potential mistakes. We previously used two employees to create accounts when new staff members were hired who are now able to focus on other aspects of their job as accounts are created automatically. Vendor and partner accounts are created by a staff member who is a sponsor for that account. When that account is created, an expiration date is set, which automatically disables the account on a specific date. And this eliminates accounts being forgotten and left active, which reduces the number of accounts that could become compromised in the future. Previously, all staff members were local administrators on their computers throughout the district. This was great that it allowed them to install any software they needed without having to contact technology. Unfortunately, this also allowed software to be installed using their credentials without necessarily having their knowledge. This included viruses and other types of malware. In the fall of 2018, we used an automated process called group policy to remove local administrator rights from all staff members except for the technology team members. This stops unauthorized software installs from occurring without the user's knowledge and limits an attacker's abilities if an account is compromised. Another step we took regarding administrator rights on district computers is utilizing a solution called, for Microsoft called LAPS. We began using the solution in March of 2020. And what it does automatically manages the passwords of local accounts on our network computers, such as desktops in the classrooms or laptops used by building administrators. LAPS randomly generates a password for the local accounts and stores them so that only eligible users can retrieve it or request it, request that it be reset. It also changes the password frequently so that if a password is compromised, it isn't good for very long. We also updated our staff password policy to follow NIST guidelines from 2017 regarding password length. We moved from a requirement of eight characters to a requirement of 12 characters. And we also recommend that our staff use a passphrase rather than a single word. Changing from a character password to 12 character password doesn't sound like a lot, but it does increase the time that it takes for a password generating piece of software to guess the password from five hours to a couple centuries. With that, Barry Newman will talk to you about creating cyber secure culture.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Like you said, I'm Barry Newman. We're going to talk about a cyber secure culture. And that starts by forming partnerships that we have with our staff. Like we said earlier, it's not just one person's job. It's not one department's job. It's everybody's job. And so it's important to get that information out so that everybody understands what is expected of them. You know, we do a lot to protect our buildings physically in terms of locks on the doors and security cameras and key fobs. We need to do similar things with our electronic information and our data. So it's just as important as stop, drop and roll, right? All the kids in the elementary schools, they understand that concept. They need to understand even some of the basic security things going on as far as cybersecurity goes. We need to recall that it only takes one click, right? So everybody needs to be on board with this. Everybody needs to know it could only be one click and that creates a problem. And it is a long term commitment, right? This isn't just a series of checkboxes that we can check off and be done and move on to a new project. It's something that we have to constantly be doing. And what we need to do to address that is to build a culture, right? And these are a lot of the things that Tracy Barney does with her staff out in the buildings, the technicians. They're building relationships with the teachers and staff out there, being responsive to their questions, quick turnarounds on tickets and things like that. That's the same thing we need to do as far as cybersecurity goes. But the most important piece I want to draw to your attention is the third from the bottom here, positive reinforcement, okay? Our approach to this has to be one that's positive for our staff members. We can't have it be a negative thing where anyone's getting yelled at or they're demeaning them because that's just going to cause them to shrink and not want to report anything and not, not be involved and be in a partnership with us. So it's very important that it's a positive thing. We, we attend lots of webinars and do lots of clinics and things like that. And one of the stories that stuck with me is somebody received an email and clicked on it. And immediately they knew, oh, I think something bad happened right here, right? And things are popping up on their computer and they're like, oh my gosh, what did I do? Well, she turned her computer off, went to her boss and said, I don't feel good. I'm going home. Well, the damage was already done, right? Because she clicked that button and now all of a sudden that's spreading through the environment and no one knew about it, no one knew to address it, no one knew to look for it, to put a stop to it. And it caused all sorts of problems and that was a culture problem, right? She did the wrong thing by not letting anybody know, but that was probably a bad culture there, where it wasn't a warm receptive feeling of like, oops, I did something wrong. How can we fix this? It was, I'm afraid of what they might tell me or what they're going to yell at me for. I'm going to just turn it off and go home, okay? And so we need to be aware of that and that needs to be part of the way that we, we deal with things that's positive and people feel comfortable coming up to us and self-reporting, even if it's a false positive, right? It could be something, hey, I think I clicked on this and I'm not sure what's going on. Can you guys take a look at it? Sure, we'll take a look at it and we'll, we'll look at it, address it. And if we have to put it, we can put it to bed, that's fine, you know? But if it is a problem, we're really happy that you let us know about it so that we can address it and move on and get it nipped quickly as possible so we can, we can get that before it becomes a major issue, okay? So we do this through education awareness. We've talked about this. We can do things like we can get out some alerts to people beforehand if we know that the trends are coming in a certain direction. We do get the newsletters. I think Terry and Nick have mentioned to you some of the partnerships that we have. We get those newsletters. They're kind of dry, but thankfully we have some people on our team that can turn those into a fun little graphic. We can get that out to our users. And just a little heads up of like, these things might be coming down the road. And I'll show you an example of one of those in just a minute. We also do posters in the hallways, media centers, things like that. Any way we can think of to get the information out as many different mediums as possible so that one of them hits and that information gets our end users at some point. But we also have, you know, you think about math standards and English standards that we implement across the board in K-12. There is also computer science standards. And so our teachers are actively integrating those into the curriculum as well. So that gets pushed down to our students. And digital citizenship as well. There was really not an age that's too young for them to start digital citizenship. We'll start that as early as kindergarten and start building that, you know, is this safe? Does this seem right? Is this, is this kind? Are we doing? Just questions asked at that, obviously we'll do it age appropriate, you know? And as they get older, the concepts become a little more in depth. But it goes all the way up to the high school where they're doing some different things with Project Lead the Way. And I believe on, on the weekends, they also had some competitions that were put on by the air force. So there were some really neat things that the students are able to do as well. And obviously, we've mentioned it many times tonight, the simulation of phishing attempts, that's the biggest way into the network is through email. So we need to make sure that we're simulating those phishing attempts. We do fire drills and tornado drills. Well, we're going to do cybersecurity drills too, right? And that's in the form of a phishing attempt. And so in addition to our partnerships with staff, we have a partnership with Indiana DOE, right? Because they know about what happened with Louisiana, the state of emergency in Louisiana where things kind of went crazy, as well as that district in Kentucky, $3.7 million, right? Who wants to really write a check for $3.7 million? I don't think anybody. There's other ways that we can spend that money. So the DOE has recognized this. They've been able to purchase a software program and share it at a discount since they're getting so many licenses for it. And we're able to use this to do, do some phishing simulations. I'll have an example here in just a moment. But we, we understand number one way into the network is through email. We need to practice, practice, practice. End users need to recognize they're the target, okay? Some people may not even know that. They may not even recognize that they're the target. They think it's an IT problem. They think it's something that's going to get taken care of by other people, but they're really the target. They could be the one person that ends up clicking. So we need to educate them on that and then drill, drill, drill with these simulations. So I told you I'd have an example. Here's an example of an alert where we're getting out ahead of it on the left side. And on the right side, we've got a simulation example, okay? So the, the alert is the information we get from our consortium and our partnerships with, with different intelligence agencies. And they're telling us, hey, we're seeing this trend. Be aware, be on the lookout. There could be some, some phishing attempts coming with, with this subject. Obviously COVID-19, it's on everybody's minds. They're going to, they're going to go out and they're going to try and, try and hit these topics because they know that people are going to be more vulnerable to those. And so here's a simulation example. It'll say hi and it'll address the person with their name, makes the person feel like they know them. Oh, they know my name. And look, there's a vaccine treatment in Carmel. Hey, that's where I work. So they're getting you by saying, we know your name, we know where you work. This looks legit. Just click on this button right here and we'll show you where you can get a vaccine, right? It's giving you that warm fuzzy, but we need to train our users to understand that click could be a wrong one. So when you hover that mouse over that button, what is it, where is it really taking you? Should we look at this? Is this something fishy? If it is, then we need to report that and not click on that link. Here's another example of a notification where we're getting out in front. Like if HR is going to be changing something or if they're going to have something new coming down the pipeline, we'll want to get out ahead of that and say, hey, expect this email to come with the exact subject line like this. That way you know that, that something new is coming down and that you can trust it, even if it's from an outside source. We can get out in front of those because, you know, like the example on the right side is tax season, right? People are getting ready to do their taxes now, something like that. Click here for your W2. Oh, well, maybe this is the way we're doing it now. No, we would like to get out in front of that. We would preemptively let our users know that something new is coming down so we don't have them clicking on something like that. So how have we been doing? Well, depends, right? We, we talked about it only takes one click and we get more than one each time we do one of these simulations, okay? But each time, it's, it's a, it's a learning experience. And again, we talked about having a positive environment. When someone ends up clicking on one of these simulation attempts, it's not about you did it wrong and we're going to yell at you and put you in timeout. We don't do that, right? It's, it's about this is what you did wrong. This is something that you could have looked for. This was a telltale sign that this was a phishing attempt. And so these are in chronological order, going from left to right. And you can see that we were about 5% and then it started getting better, getting better as we're educating our users, which we would expect. But then you see a spike here where we got up to about 15%, okay? And that was one where you'll see it says Roger, okay? So we used an administrator here with his permission, put his name on it, okay? And it turned it into like a social media type of thing, gave people that warm fuzzy that, oh, I know Roger and maybe he's asking me for my opinion on something and I'll click that because I'm curious, right? And so people clicked, 15% of us clicked, but it turned out to be a simulation, okay? And it's, it's a valuable lesson, right? And again, positive environment. How can we learn from this? How can we move forward? How can we recognize this in the future so that it's not something that we're going to click on and we're, we're starting to head back down, okay? Well.
They didn't like me after they got that.
Yeah. Yeah, but it, it's important to remember that like the, the people, the bad actors that we spoke about are, are really, they don't care about your feelings, right? They, they want your money. And the way to get that is to get you to click on something. So they, they try and get you no matter, however they can. They put an administrator's name on it. They understand your name, your location in Carmel. They'll do anything they can because they want your money and nothing's off limits to them. So when we're doing our simulations, really nothing should be off limits to us. We really need to mimic those, those, those attempts as much as we possibly can, okay? So we will continue to do this. We will be moving these on in the future. We'll be doing these monthly things because even if we did get down to 0%, again, we talked about there's not a finish line. Even if we did get down to 0%, multiple simulations, guess what happens in August? We get a whole new group of teachers and staff members that come in in August. So that's why we're working with HR to make sure we get those new people right up to speed. And then we're going to be monthly simulations and drilling it in on them as well. Very important. So like I said, we'll be doing that, moving on into the future. And we have some more future things to talk about with Josh Leonard.
So looking into the future, what we can do as a district and as a staff and as part of the tech team, we look at things that we can add in or get better at as a whole, as a whole community. And the first thing that most people are probably aware of is adding in two factor authentication. So what this does adds another layer of protection to your login accounts. So it uses two of three characteristics. It uses something that you know, something that you are or something that you have. An example of something that you know would be your password, your dog's name, your cat's name, stuff like that. Something you are would be a physical trait of yourself. And then something you have would be your cell phone, key badge, your key. So we would use two of these factors for authentication. We wouldn't use a physical trait, so you wouldn't have to worry about that. You wouldn't have to worry about retinal scan or fingerprint or anything like that. But you know, you're, you've probably have accounts set up already for like Comcast or your bank where you sign in and say, hey, you know, this looks like a new device. And they'll send you an email that you have to verify. That's the same thing as two factor authentication. Another topic that we usually go over, we have bi-weekly meetings that we talk as a team. We go over what's tabletop scenarios. So what table tops are, it gives us a chance to talk about situations that could happen, situations that may have happened or situations that have happened to other people. These give us a chance to learn from those incidents and to identify the weaknesses and strengths of what happened. It helps us build collaboration as a team and community to overcome anything that could happen. Examples of some of the things we talk about, this is not an exhaustive list by any means, but like Barry talked about earlier, the phishing attempts. What if we did have a large scale phishing attempt like with, with Roger's email? What if that was real? What would we do? How would we overcome it? What if we had data leaks from either testing data or it got leaked in the dark web? Or if we had staff and student issues, you know, how would we work together as a team and staff to overcome those issues? And more on the physical side, the scenarios we talk about, what if we had a fire? What if we had a tornado? What if we had another boiler blow up? What if we experienced a heavy denial of service attack that shut down multiple internet connections? How would we fix our systems so there was as little disruption as possible to any of our students or staff? And another one is outside vendor mistake. So as a whole district, we have vendors with HR, finance, technology. Everybody uses a vendor for something. Everybody uses a vendor for something and they usually need access to our systems. So with those third parties that come in, they exist in all departments and they'll need access to our systems, whether it be daily, monthly, yearly. We are continuing to work as a team to limit their access, limit the number of accounts they have, set limited activity periods so like they don't have access at the middle of the night, at midnight. They don't need that. If we're not around, they don't need access. And then if they are no longer being used or if they're no longer working with the district, we go ahead and expire those accounts. So when using all those things together, we really, really reduce our risk from third-party vendors. And the last part here that we do, we go through cybersecurity audits. So we do our own internal audits. We do our own internal scanning that gives us ideas of what threats are out there, what we need to fix, if there's patches that are available, cameras need updating, you know, it's a whole variety of stuff. And we've also worked with the DOE with a partnership with them. And we partnered with Rook Security and we had an internal audit done by that professional company. They gave us a checklist of everything we could fix, what we need to do better, what we're doing great at, how we can manage our traffic better. I mean, it was very exhaustive. And along with the DOE partnership, we get a cybersecurity checklist as well. And we're always looking for another partnership with any other companies to, you know, do an audit just like Rook did. So we could have, you know, like Barry said, it's ongoing. This never ends. There's never a finish line. So the more we can work with people to have a better idea where we can strive to be better, that's what we need to do. And now I'm going to hand it back off to Kristi to talk about how do schools improve.
Thanks, Josh. Well, we've given you a lot of information tonight about cybersecurity and all the things that we're doing in our district, how you can partner with us, how our staff can partner with us, and how it's a never-ending battle to battle cybersecurity attackers. So there are a few key takeaways we want to remind you of. Number one, you now know some really critical reasons why schools are targets, right? We have student data that attackers want to have. We have lots of money. And frequently, we're undereducated staff as far as cybersecurity is concerned. We want you to understand that it's a risk. It's not just an IT risk, it's a CCS risk, right? Every single click that somebody makes or responds to from an email can be a risk to our district. And so it's important that everyone is educated. We hope you, we've demonstrated to you that this is growing exponentially. Three times as many outbreaks in the last few years as we would have had reported just five years ago. And that we are continuing to work at how to control our environment, but yet still providing opportunities for teachers to exhibit creativity and work with students on projects that they need to, and software that they're interested in. And we're continuing in the education, you know, as Mr. Newman referenced with the newest partnership with the DOE, Know Before Platform, which we are using to finesse the phishing campaigns and to further educate our staff. And ultimately, this is a continued partnership that we need with everybody. So what's the call to action? What more can we do for K-12 schools? So number one, we need a greater investment in IT security. And that starts at our federal level and at our state level, right? We've had a few opportunities for grants from the federal or from the State Department for partnerships, but there hasn't been a huge emphasis on funding K-12 IT security. And that's an important piece that we would appreciate your advocacy in. We need to increase staff capacity, not just of this team here, but of all constituents of Carmel Clay Schools so that everyone is able to be a warrior against cyber attacks. Nobody likes this third item when I mention this, improved regulations and policies. But really, if we stop and think about it, if every K-12 school in Indiana is out there working on their own policies with regards to cybersecurity and what does that look like, that's not effective for anyone. So we'd like some work from that point with the Department of Ed in helping us as K-12 schools work together smarter, not harder, at developing the appropriate policies for cybersecurity. And that really ties into the fourth one, they're working together with our other local, state, and national partners. And K-12-specific tools. Sometimes the things that we're battling in K-12 are a little bit different than what the business entities are battling against. We have very different software here than you might use at your law firm or that you might use in your accounting agency, right? The things that we do here are very different as it comes down to K-12 software. And so we need tools that can help K-12 respond to cybersecurity attacks. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor to questions that you might have for any member of my team.
Well, Kristi, first, thank you to you and your team. And let's see if I can remember everybody. Well, I met some new people today, so very excited. Thank you, Terry, and Josh, and Tracy, and Eric, and Nick, and I know Scott, and Barry.
Nicely done.
So that one I did look for Barry, sorry. Actually, this was far more exciting to me than the Super Bowl because the spread was way too big.
Understood.
So I do have a few questions. I'm just going to start with the one question. I'm going to open it up to the board because I know everybody has some questions. But with all of, there's just so much out there. Do we carry insurance against these attacks? And how does that work?
So without having planned for that question, yes, we do carry cybersecurity insurance. So I didn't have that built into the slide. And you'll notice my team was rather vague on names of products and things that we use within the district on purpose. We don't want to obviously share all of our security footprint across the internet through this presentation being streamed, obviously, on YouTube. But we do carry cybersecurity insurance and we have these four kind of components that go along with that policy as well. So we have a crisis hotline that we can call at any time to debrief something that we think could be an incident or like, do you think we need to report this? Do we not? We have a claims process that they work us through if we do indeed have an incident. We have response coaches that can, again, talk to us about those potential things. And there would be an incident response team involved should we have a breach that we need to call them about. So yes, we do have insurance and all of those pieces are part of that package.
Thank you.
Yes.
And now I will open it up for others who may have questions. Pam?
Yes, just want you to know that reading through this PowerPoint just totally overwhelmed me at home. And I could not believe the amount of information that all of you have to go through and respond to in this district to keep us, to keep cybersecurity away from this district. And I just applaud you for everything you do for us and thank you very much for this presentation. I thought the information about passwords was very interesting because that's something that I just kind of use the same things over and over and over again. I know I shouldn't. How do you stay on top of all of the student Chromebooks that are out there? Because we have the one-to-one now. So I know it's all feeding into the same system, but do we have very many breaches with the students? Do they go in, try to go into programs that they shouldn't? That's one of my questions. And in the same vein, when a student goes home and doesn't use their Chromebook, but they use their own device instead of the Chromebook, do we have problems with that?
Okay, so let me see if I can answer all those questions or if any one of you want to jump in. But I think Tracy and Eric could speak a little bit to what we do with Chromebooks. We're constantly automating processes and Barry as well with the Chromebooks to have them shut down through a periodic process. And we're teaching kids to shut them down on an ongoing basis. So this allows us to constantly patch those so that they don't become vulnerable when a new version of Chrome is released. The way that the Chrome browser natively works on those devices is they are, they do not have the same type of access that you have from a Windows device to servers and those types of things. So the vulnerabilities are different between different platforms. So that prevents some of the activity that students might have done from a Windows device previously. Your next question was when they go home and they're on their Chromebook or not on their Chromebook as opposed to a personal device. When they're on their personal device at home, we have visibility only into the activity that they're doing on our resources. So when they're in Canvas, obviously, we can see what they're doing within Canvas. Or if they're using another one of our tools, we have access to see what they're doing in those tools. But we don't have access to their general internet visibility when they're on, at home on their own devices.
I figured you didn't have access to their internet, but I was just wondering if you have the same access to programs that we offer if they're on their own device rather than a Chromebook?
So the, most of the resources that we have available for students are available no matter what platform they're on. So they can access Canvas no matter whether they're on a Chromebook, an iPad, or a Windows device. And Destiny, the library system, for example, they can access that from any of the devices. So because so many of the tools for students are now Web 2.0 or they're available online, they don't actually require a piece of software to be installed. And so therefore, yes, they do have access to those resources no matter which platform they're on.
Okay, like everyday math, they have the math games that they can get on too and those are all secure.
Those are all on a web platform. And so there is no, no software is being installed on those. Yes, yes.
I just want to echo the thoughts for thanking you guys for coming this evening and for what you do for every day. And is one of those, and I don't know if it was in the presentation that you took out, is one of those board members that clicked yes to Roger and trusted Roger. That was a very valuable learning experience. You know, I thought that I was aware and not clicking on random things and I realized all it took is somebody that I trusted. And when I went back, I'm like, why would he have sent me that? But I clicked, so thank you.
Yes, we know that it's very sensitive when you do click on those. And we've had some people with hurt feelings or they've been upset when they've clicked on a phishing simulation. And like Mr. Newman talked about, really, that's what they're after. They're after you when you're weak and when you're vulnerable, right? And so when you're afraid to admit that or you're ashamed that you did that, it just causes us to be in more of a reactive rather than proactive stance. And so that's why it's so critical that we really work with our staff members to report, report, report. That's the number one thing we want them to do. And we all make mistakes, right? I think one of the very first times I met a technician 22 years ago, I was a teacher at Prairie Trace and I had to go get a technician. I was like, my computer's doing something weird. And he was like, yeah, you pretty much just got yourself a little virus friend. So that's probably one of my first times that I interacted with any of these team members is when I was a teacher many years ago. So it happens to everybody.
Thank you for making me less trusting of Roger. Get that out of the way. But how many touchpoints do you have with kids throughout the school year to just remind them? Because I find myself struggling with this with my kids in the house and just saying, hey, be careful not to click on, be careful to hover, be careful. But I'm interested in how many touchpoints do we have with the kids throughout the year on this?
So I think that depends on level, but at each level throughout K-12, there are a variety of opportunities that are required through the E-Rate process to educate students about cybersecurity. So it requires them to be educated on not interacting with, like, online chat rooms, not to click on information online. So there are different components of each year of the curriculum that the students are taught about and engaged in. Obviously, in our elementary curriculum, we have a special elective that's tied to computer lab or STEM programming where that is something that the teachers can talk about each week within that programming. And they have little nuggets of it throughout. In our middle school programming, we have digital learning that all students go through. And at our high school, they utilize many different electives to talk about this. And then they also have some special video programming they do throughout the years during SRQ. So that, Dr. Dudley, if you have anything else to add there, but those are a couple areas that through the personal process, we're able to have those touchpoints with kids.
Yes, and I'd just like to add, as Mrs. Cloud said, we do have touchpoints with that. And then also, many of our schools are certified through Common Sense Education, which is all on the cybersecurity. And they need to go through specific pieces with all of their teachers as well as the students. So not only do we do it within the computer lab time, but then also throughout, integrated throughout that instruction for our students, K-12. Thank you.
I've seen several teachers use our Phishing Expeditions with their own classes to say, hey, I just got this email. Do you think I should click on this? And kind of have a lesson with their students as well, using some of the materials that we set forth. And we know with this new partnership from the DOE with the Know Before Platform, there's also a series of videos and trainings within there that teachers will have access to that they can also then turn around and use in the classroom. So that will be another place that they can embed that content.
Are there more questions? Katie?
Well, first of all, I'm married to a web developer. So I know that you guys much rather be behind the screen than in front of it. So I just want to say thank you for coming here tonight and coming, going up there and talking to us. Another thing is you reminded me of all the annoying things he does at my house are beneficial. So I'll tell him that, you know, I agree with it, I guess, a little bit. My question for you is, in the corporate world, where I work, we use a VPN. So is that something that K-12 utilizes? Do you guys have your own kind of thing? So that's more a technical question, but could you explain that to me a little bit?
Yes, we do have a VPN in this district as well that is available to any user who uses our financial system or our HR system. So all of that record is protected behind that VPN. So yes, that is a platform we use. It's not used for every employee in the district, but it is used for our most vulnerable assets.
Perfect. And then my, one more question is, and you briefed a little bit about the organizations you're involved in, but I know that this is definitely something where professional development is very key because it is constantly changing. Could you talk a little bit about opportunities presented to our staff for professional development?
Yes, so I, through our phishing campaign, that has been one of the key places that we have embedded this is through the materials that they receive if they do click on a link. We've also shared a variety of PowerPoints with principals to take back or slideshows to take back to share with staff. And then working with the HR team, we also have some training materials that are available through the SAFE schools that can be distributed to staff as another way to provide professional development on cybersecurity.
And what about your own staff?
Oh, our own staff, they participate in just, if they find something that they want to participate on, they can attend anything really that they want to participate in. And they participate in all of those webinars through the MSI SAC, through HECC, through COSIN, all of those opportunities that they have to grow and learn through any of those.
Perfect, thank you.
And I'm not saying this has happened in our home, but if a student uses a VPN and goes through a different network but gets onto our school network or our school sites like Power School or, I'm not sure, are we compromising? Does our school information get compromised? Okay, my child does not, it's all about me. He does not go through the school website. He thinks it's, quote, "too slow," which I know it's not. He just wants to bypass all of our safety measures. And I'm sure he's not alone. So do students compromise our system and how do we protect ourselves?
So all of the systems that are available to students are available through a web browser without accessing them through our environment because they have to be able to access them from home. And we have to enable parents to access them. So by them using their own internet connection, they are not making us vulnerable by doing that.
Good, thank you. Are there other questions this evening? Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And next on our agenda, we have reports. And Dr. Beresford, I know you have report, a report, a lengthy, very robust report. And we will turn the floor to you.
I got it down to one page, so this is going to be a shorter one than usual. But first, I want to just thank the team tonight. You guys did a fantastic job. And these guys are, they come to work every day and they do this work. And you can see how complex it is and that they're constantly learning and then taking that learning and applying it, you know, to protect the district and to make things work. And they even have old dudes like me that are not, we're kind of immigrants to technology and they don't make me feel like a dummy or a moron because I can't figure things out. They teach every day and I really appreciate you guys' work. And what a great presentation to see all the things that go on to keep Carmel Clay Schools safe, our district, our kids and our families and our employees. So, and I did want to say for the record that I did not click on the Roger. And I did want to say, for the record, that I did not click on the Roger form, because it said something about like websites or something, and I thought, ah, Roger wouldn't do that. This has, this has got to be, got to be a fish. I also want to thank Leila for the opening quote, and really feel strongly about our, you know, the service that our social workers and our school counselors and our school psychs, and now our new partnership with, you know, the therapists that are available for families. And I really do appreciate all the support services that we do have, and we celebrate that. This is the Culture of Care Month, so there's more to come as we move through the, you know, the month and do that support for our kids and our CCS family. As you know, month of February is Black History Month, so we are celebrating across the district with a lot of different activities and resources for students and teachers. Terry Roberts Leonard, our new DEI officer, has only been here like a couple of weeks, and she just jumped on the train fast and got a lot of things going, and it's been pretty exciting. But she put together and created some resources which include an art and poetry contest, and the topic is Juneteenth. She videotaped some read-along stories that are on YouTube for our younger students. We have a special spoken word performance on February 25th for our older students, and that includes this, it's kind of an artistic way, but it works on reflecting on racism and also racial trauma and self-care, and that's about using the arts to heal from trauma. And the spoken word artist is Taylor McElwain, and so I think that'll be a real special activity. In addition to student resources, she's also hosting a virtual train for staff on allyship, and that's going to kick off the start of her Excellence in Equity series. So while Black History is a part of our history all year long, it's great to celebrate Black History Month each February. So a lot of good things going on in the district. In the world of sports, I had the pleasure of watching the Lady Hounds play on Friday night in the semifinals of the sectional where they got a one-bucket win over Fishers in a real hard-fought game. But I got to tell you, on Saturday night, for the, that basketball game was one of the most high-level games I've seen. The Lady Hounds lost a close one in the sectional championship on Saturday night, but it was incredible. It was high-level, it was hard-fought, it was high-scoring, and it was tied most of the entire game. And I was so proud of the heart and character our girls displayed on the court and off the court. And I just wanted to throw out a congratulations to Coach Erin Trimpe and her staff and the team, that they ended the season 15-7 and were second in the Mick Conference, which is a very, very tough, tough conference to play in. So real proud of their efforts, and just, they put their heart on the line and just came up a little bit short, so, but real proud of them. Girls Swimming and Diving dominated sectionals last week and are heading to the state finals, which are this weekend. And the Hounds are looking to extend the nation's longest winning streak to 35 straight state titles, and they're in a good position to do that. Excuse me. Greyhound Wrestlers won the regional on Saturday, and they advanced 11 wrestlers to the semi-state this weekend. So they're all hoping to punch their tickets to the state finals as well. So a real good week in athletics for the Greyhounds. So there's some other teams. This Carmel High School Debate Team tied its best finish in school history in the Indiana High School Forensic Association State Tournament by placing second. The last time Carmel placed second was in 1986. So as you can tell, these guys really brought it. They had a real successful year last year as well, so they keep getting better and better. And this past week, they swept the district tournament for the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament Qualifiers. So in addition to the seven qualifying entries, the first three alternates in each event will also qualify for that Nationals and World Schools Debate. So Debate Team is having a real good season. Not to be outdone by the College Wood Science Bowl Team that are state champions. And so they won the state championship last week, and so a big thank you to Coach and fifth-grade teacher J.C. Snyder for coaching the team, and congrats to the Cardinal Science students. A job well done. So we have some, some science state champs out there on the West Side. There's a big, I don't know if you've heard about this competition, but it's called Read to the Final Four. And so elementary schools are participating. And last week, the tournament bracket for Read to the Final Four was announced for, and this is all third graders, and seven of our schools have made it into the tournament. And so it's mimicking the March Madness College Tournament. And so we are cheering for each one of those schools as the tournament continues, and I believe there's like 64 schools, and they'll be going through it just like the NCAA tournament. My bell ringer for tonight is kind of thematic because, and I think it was even mentioned in the presentation, so with all the work that you heard tonight on cybersecurity, I wanted to know, you to know that Carmel High School's very own Cyber Patriots teams, they had two teams that participated in the state of Indiana competition in the Platinum Division, which is the highest division, and our teams placed first and second in the state for the Platinum Division for the Cyber Patriots competition. So congrats to the teams and teacher Carrie Anderson, and she's the Cyber Patriots coach. So not only is our team here working real, real hard, our high school kids are making a name for themselves in the field of cybersecurity. So real proud of them and their efforts. And that concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. I will share a couple fun. Monday, February 15th, there is no school in honor of President's Day. Our next meeting then will be on February 22nd, and it'll be a regular board business meeting. Is there any other business that any board members would like to contribute this evening? Okay, seeing none. May I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Hey, Louise, second. All those, all those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.